Good evening, everybody. I want to thank all of you for coming tonight. We're going to have a good time this evening going through a student school board. Your kids were great today, by the way. And so we're not going to spend a lot of time before we get them started. And so are you ready, Austin?
I'm ready.
Sure? Okay, all right, here we go. Get it started for us.
This meeting is called to order. Superintendent Dean, will you please lead us off with the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is one of those times in the board meeting when community members are allowed to address the board. There will also be a public hearing at the end of the meeting. Does anyone in the audience wish to be heard at this time?
President Barnett, I'm a parent of a Roseville student, and I saw something in the newsletter about a strategic plan. Can you tell me what that entails?
That is a very good question. Our superintendent, Ramaya Dean, will be happy to outline and preside over that issue.
Thank you very much for bringing up this subject. Strategic planning is a method for the district to get information from the community, students, parents, and staff to develop goals for the next three to five years. We had a strategic planning retreat in October of 2021, and Dr. Rod Green from the MASP, Michigan Association of School Boards Organization, helped facilitate the process. At the end of the day, the district had five goals and objectives for each goal. District mission, vision, and belief statements were also created. Following this event, the administrators of the district began working on ways to meet these goals. To help manage this large task, some subcommittees were formed and have been developing activities to meet the objectives. I will now ask Assistant Superintendent Personnel Isabel Scott to share some of these developments.
Part of this strategic plan is aligned with human resources and personnel. It is our goal to recruit and secure a skilled and diverse staff and to provide the staff with opportunities to develop the leadership capacity. Presently, we are working on a survey to gain perspectives from staff that came from other districts. We want to hear from them as how we can best pull in new talent and what we did well or what we can improve.
President Barnett, I would like to ask Ms. Scott if salary and benefits are the thing that potential teachers are looking for the most?
Pay and benefits matter. There is no doubt about that. However, there are intangibles such as a sense of community and opportunities for growth that also matter. We need to identify all the tangible and intangible issues that will help us to recruit and retain staff. Once we have hired staff members, we want them to be involved in the district. It is our belief that all employees function as leaders on multiple levels. We do mean all staff, not inclusively teachers. Such an example would be the way Diane Rogers leads the Scholarship Winter Gala and Golf Outing. Teachers lead classrooms, bus drivers lead buses, and cooks lead kitchens, and so on. In some way, all of us are leaders and need to continually hone those skills. We believe that providing many opportunities to become involved and to lead will increase connection and satisfaction. We are about to send out a survey to tap the leadership capacity of our staff.
The strategic plan also mentions diversity. How does the plan address this?
Diversity is a strength in our district. We believe that our staff can best be positioned to serve our community if we mirror our community. That means we will continue to recruit the highest quality staff that is diverse in race, age, and gender. The demand for teachers has opened a variety of pathways to certifications, and we are taking advantage of all of them.
Trustee Semiak, I see you have a question?
President Barnett, what role is this marketing plan in the development of the district's strategic plan?
Our communications and marketing facilitator, Brooklyn Gibbons, will help us address your opinion, I mean, address your question.
The Strategic Plan Communications Committee is made up of a cross-section of administrators, teachers, and parents. The goal of our committee is to focus on a long-term plan to strengthen both internal and external communication with our students, parents, staff, and community stakeholders. We have so much to brag about here in Roseville: caring, dedicated staff, incredible programs, the latest technology, and so much more. We need to make sure that we are using the best possible avenues to get the word out about the great educational experience we provide for all of our students.
Just like Armus' video would be the reason that made national news.
Vice President Tamala, I see you have a question?
President Barnett, what are some examples of things that the Communications Committee has put into action?
We are always trying to promote a positive perception of our schools. We did a district rebrand at the end of last summer, redesigning the district and individual school logos. In conjunction, we now have an online apparel store for every school in the district, so students, staff, and parents can get t-shirts, hoodies, hats, and much more anytime they want. Beginning last fall, we partnered with Jeffrey Nissan of Roseville and several other local businesses of our Teacher of the Month initiative. Each month, we honor a teacher from one of our schools who receives gift cards from local businesses, a Tarma of Total Care package from Jeffrey Nissan, and other assorted items. It's a small way to say thank you to our wonderful teachers while also partnering with members of our community.
Trustee Hall, I see you have a question?
President Barnett, we know that as a part of the technology bond, all students were given devices. Are there any remaining items to be implemented from the technology bond?
Director of Technology Zach Asario, can you answer that question?
Our schools are very fortunate that our community supported three district technology refreshes or updates with the passing of the 2018 bond proposal. This will ensure that our district technology will be current for students for many years to come. The planning for Series 2s of the bond dollars for the district's second technology refresh started in November of 2022. To be able to procure the updated technology, certain things must happen before a final purchase can be made, like having the money to spend. The initial planning begins with the Superintendent, Executive Director of Business, Director of Buildings and Grounds, and the Director of Technology.
Can I ask a question? Yes. Yes. Mr. Asario, what kinds of things go into planning the second series of the bond refresh?
Our group will review the budget that was approved in 2018 bond proposal. We will meet with our technology consultant, Barton Mallow, to determine the district's replacement needs, including technology, equipment needs, age, life expectancy, warranty expirations, and quantities. We will then develop a schedule so that the business office can make a plan for the sales of the bonds. This will provide the money needed to make the purchases. We will then establish an equipment evaluation process, which is planned to begin in the fall of 2023, with a recommendation presented to the school board as early as 2024. The session will be collaborative effort that will include teachers and administrators. If everything goes as planned, we should have new student one-to-one computers in students' hands for the start of the 2024-2025 school year. This timeline matches with our district's strategic plan.
Thank you, Mr. Asario. Trustee Hall, do you have a question?
President Barnett, what is the status of the construction of the new clinic at Roseville Middle School?
Director of Buildings and Grounds Isis Curry, can you provide us with some information about the construction on the new clinic?
The Ascension Clinic is currently being renovated. The clinic is in the old hospitality management area at Roseville Middle School, which is not currently being used. We have been working closely with partners in architecture and Barton Mallow on this project. All the abestos removal is completed, and demolition of the project is underway. There is still a long lead time on the mechanical equipment we ordered, but we are on track to complete this project by the end of the summer.
Thank you, Ms. Curry. Treasurer Rule, do you have a question?
President Barnett, the past two years have been incredibly challenging for schools, especially with our end-of-the-year celebrations. Can you tell us about challenges that we're still facing in our district throughout COVID?
I will direct that question to our Superintendent Ramaya.
The last couple of years have been difficult to organize any events, including high school graduation due to COVID. Now we must find a new venue for next year because the basketball church is no longer hosting graduation ceremonies. We have already visited McComb Community College Expo Center on the South Campus. They have a new air conditioning system being installed this year. They also sent us a video of a past ceremony to view. Another issue not directly related to COVID is the retention of third graders due to reading scores. I will let our board attorney update us with the pending legislation.
In 2016, the Michigan Legislature passed a law that requires schools to identify learners who are struggling with reading and writing and to provide additional help. The law states that third graders are to repeat third grade if they are more than one grade level behind, beginning with the 2019-2020 school year. However, research has shown that retention hurts students' progress. In fact, the students fall further behind when retained. Currently, there is pending legislation to remove this portion of the law.
Thank you, Ms. Walker. Secretary Miller, do you have a question?
I know that there were a group of Roseville teachers who worked this past summer on curriculum alignment. Can you tell us what that means and how the work was done?
Absolutely. Our Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum and Instruction, Anthony Wackworth, can field those questions.
Every school district in the state is required to post the curriculum on their website. This public version includes ICANN statements, scope and sequence of topics, and key vocabulary essentials to each core area class and elective class by grade level. This work can be viewed by parents or really any Roseville community member. There is also a working copy that teachers use to collaborate to make additions and subtractions from one year to the next. This live document includes assessments and assignments that all teachers have access to. This alignment ensures that schools across the districts are teaching the same standards to all students.
Thank you, Mr. Wackworth. Vice President Tamala, do you have a question?
President Barnett, can you explain what is meant by "core area"?
Again, I will defer to Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum and Instruction Anthony Wackworth.
Core area classes refer to four major categories of learning: math, reading, science, and social studies. Additional key areas that include part of one or more of the core include the arts, CTE, business, and physical education.
Mr. Wackworth, this sounds like a great undertaking. Is the work completed?
Teachers continually review their teaching to improve and grow with the turnover of new students, newly discovered knowledge, and the times in the world changing around us. Curriculum alignment and development is never really complete. Teachers continuously review assignments, learning targets, assessments, and state tests to ensure that the current students are performing at the highest level possible. We are currently focusing on developing top-level assessments at every grade.
Thank you, Anthony. Trustee Mackenzie Hubbard, do you have a question?
Yes, President Barnett, can you give us any updates on our federal and state grants?
Our Coordinator of State and Federal Programs Sidney Masterson can answer that question.
Thank you, Mr. President. The district has been awarded many additional grants, which include 97, 97C, 97D, and 31AA. These grants total just over $1 million. The purpose of these grants is to provide additional resources and money for student mental health and school safety and security. One resource that will be funded is addition of a school resource officer at Roseville Middle School. Section 31AA focuses on mental health for students, which can include school psychologists, social workers, and/or counselors. The district is working to secure these vital resources to provide support and safety for our students. Example is our mental health support from Ascension Medical Group.
Thank you, Ms. Masterson. Trustee Semiak, do you have a question?
We have heard about staffing shortages for many school districts. How is this impacting our district?
Great question. Assistant Superintendent of Personnel Isabel Scott can provide more information.
Staffing is a constant challenge. We have to deal with retirements, resignations, and other districts luring our employees away on a continual basis. Since last July 1st, we have had to recruit, interview, and fill well over 110 professional positions. This includes teachers, administrators, aides, and paraproses. There are many other issues to be dealt with in our office, but a full staff takes precedence over all other personnel matters. I think food, service, and transportation should share their situation as well.
Currently, the Food Service Department is fully staffed, but we are always hiring substitute cooks. Currently, we have 31 cooks, and 20 of them are Serve Safe certified, and seven of our head cooks have completed the school nutrition leadership training.
Transportation has been fortunate to be fully staffed. Hiring bus drivers has been a main goal since June of 2021, and that has not changed. We currently have 22 drivers and one van driver. We also have two mechanics that are also certified to drive the bus. The mechanics sometimes must drive, which can cause issues when repairs are needed. For that reason, we will always be looking to hire more bus drivers.
Thank you, Mr. Donaldson. Treasurer Rule, do you have a question?
President Barnett, I would like to shift the discussion to other events happening in Roseville. Can you tell us about celebrating the 100th graduating class?
In the year 2024-25, the district will be celebrating its 100th graduation class. If you look in our alumni hall, you can see a composite of every graduation class since 1925. Roseville has a deep history in the community, and we would like to share some of our history. Our hope is to have a series of events throughout the year inviting alumni and current students to celebrate this milestone. Vice President Tamala, do you have a question?
President Barnett, thank you for that information. I have also heard about our addition of sensory rooms at the elementary buildings. Can you tell me what that is and how it can help our students?
Ms. Genesis Reed, our Director of Special Education, can you explain more about that?
This year, in addition to Roseville Middle School, we now have sensory rooms at Coment and Green Elementary. These rooms provide space for students to decompress. The rooms feature a variety of visuals to support communication and de-escalation. Items that can be found include sensory tables, sensory trails, fidgets, and some of the rooms even have a sensory swing. These rooms are funded using resources from the special education budget, donations from Freddie the Pizza Man Organization, and the Roseville Optimist Club. Coment's room was recently featured in the East Sider newspaper.
Thank you, Ms. Reed. If there are no other questions or comments from the board members at this time, we'll continue with the next agenda item. It is now time for our second public hearing. Does anyone from the audience have any questions or comments at this time?
President Barnett, I am a proud parent of a Roseville student. We know about the scholarships awarded to eligible RHS seniors every year and the scholarship gala that is held to raise funds. What is the result of this year's winter gala?
I'm going to direct that question to our Executive Director of Business and Finance, Neveah Dirksen.
Hello, everybody. This year's Winter Gala was a great success. Thanks to the efforts of the Roseville Scholarship Committee, we were able to raise over $35,000 in revenue. The total cost of the event was a little over $12,500, which leaves the Scholarship Foundation with over $22,000 in profit. Admission tickets, raffle tickets, and company sponsorships are all a part of the revenue raised. This year's raffle tickets were sold online and in person. Costs for the dance included the fee for the hall, DJ, and license fees. Overall, it was a great night, and I know people are already looking forward to next year's event on March 9th, 2024.
Thank you, Ms. Dirksen. It is time for our next agenda item: Nice Things Happening. I will turn this over to Mr. Rice.
This is the time of the meeting where we celebrate Nice Things Happening. We do this often, and at this meeting, this is the time that we are going to have our students celebrate their honored staff that they would like to have stand out tonight. So if I could ask all of the honored staff and others this year, come on up and stand behind your student.
Testing. Woo! Okay. All right. Hello, my name is Isis, and tonight I'm here to honor an amazing figure, Ms. Gents, or as others people would call her, Ange. Oh, God. Ms. Gents is the most uplifting, caring, and loving person I've ever met. She always gives you the motivation and confidence you wish you could provide yourself on the daily. She will never make you feel any less of a student or human for anything that you do. She sends me the most beautiful, touching words throughout my day, and to this day, she still doesn't know how much it actually means to me. She's listened to multiple tower moments in my life with no judgment or opinion, just support. She loves seeing all her kids happy. She loves seeing... Oh, God. Just her seeing you enjoy something you enjoy makes her proud. Just you showing her your grade go from a D to an A is like winning Miss Teen USA. Ms. Gents is so supportive and sure of everything when it comes to me. I haven't quite experienced someone like you. So thank you, Ms. Gents. Thank you for listening to me when I need you. Thank you for helping me when I need you. Thank you for feeding me like I'm your own. Thank you for motivating me. And lastly, thank you for being a part of my growing journey. You've always believed in me, and I love you more than words.
Hi, my name is Takai, and the teacher I am honoring today is my second-grade teacher, Ms. Sharp. Ms. Sharp was my first teacher at Roseville Community Schools. I remember being nervous on my first day, and with me being so young, my only hope was for my teacher to be nice. Ms. Sharp was not only nice, she was comforting, inspiring, patient, fun, kind, and she always made me feel like I was just the smartest person ever. I remember I cried on the first days of school because I felt really nervous. I remember Ms. Sharp coming to me and asking me, "Was I okay?", and my response was, "No, my stomach hurts." She then continued to walk with me to the office to get me crackers and juice. While I ate it, she talked to me and calmed me down. For me to still talk about this and remember this over 10 years later, you can tell this meant a lot to me and made me genuinely feel so much better. Kids usually go to school and look forward to seeing their friends, but I always looked forward to seeing Ms. Sharp for the reasons I mentioned earlier. She was so encouraging, comforting, and kind. I always would talk my mom and dad's ears off about her because I just loved being in her class so much. She made a huge impact on me, and I will never forget her. I hope little kids get to experience a teacher like Ms. Sharp in their years of their schooling. Ms. Sharp is the person who taught me how to spell Christmas. Ms. Sharp is the person who taught me how to count all the way to 1,000. And Ms. Sharp is the person who pushed me to do my best because she believed in me and knew I could do it. And Ms. Sharp is the person who made me feel like the smartest person in the class. I love how she recognized and celebrated all of our hard work with pizza parties. Those always made me feel so happy. The only day I dreaded in her class was the last day of school because I knew what this would mean, and I would have to say my goodbyes to her class. I was very sad but so happy that I moved up into the third grade. All my teachers were good throughout elementary, but Ms. Sharp was great. As I moved up in grades in elementary, I would still see Ms. Sharp in the halls. It made me so happy when she would say, "Hi, Takai." I would always think to myself, "Wow, she still remembers me? But how could she not?" I would never forget Ms. Sharp and the impact she made on me. Thank you so much. Your hard work does not go unrecognized.
All right. My name's Neveah. I will be honoring Ms. Kroll today. She's my counselor. Before I even get started, this is probably going to be a little corny, a little sappy, and if I tear up... I'm sorry, I'm an emotional person. But anyways, all right. So usually, I'm pretty good with things like this: speeches. Maybe not actually giving them, but writing them. However, this has been my hardest one so far because nothing that I say here today, no amount of thank yous will ever be able to truly describe how grateful I am to Ms. Kroll. I wouldn't be who I am today or where I am today if it wasn't for her, even though I know she would disagree. Ms. Kroll has been exactly what I've needed to keep moving forward. She's been the glass half-full for me when all I was was half-empty. She has continuously shown me and pushed me towards that light at the end of the tunnel that I was too afraid to chase. I've always tried to portray myself as someone who isn't afraid of anything, but that's the furthest thing from true. I'm constantly terrified of the unknown, of making the wrong decisions, of chasing a dream just for it to be that: a dream. And then along came Ms. Kroll, this bubbly ray of sunshine that flipped my whole world upside down. She has shown me that it's okay to be scared and hesitant, it's okay to feel down, it's normal to want to give up, as long as I don't give up on myself, as long as I keep pushing forward one day at a time. She helped me realize that in order to live, you have to take risks, that nothing is going to happen if I sit there waiting for it to. For the longest time, I was going to force myself to go to college because I felt like I had to, like it was my only option in order to live a good life. I had considered joining the service for a while, but ultimately chose against it because I didn't know for sure if it would work out in the end. So there I was, stuck for over a year trying to make the biggest decision of my life, a decision I knew I wouldn't make until it was too late. And here I am today, the most fulfilled I have ever felt, the most excited for what my future has to offer me, and a future U.S. Marine. So Ms. Kroll, thank you. Thank you for believing in me when I didn't even believe in myself. Thank you for being a shoulder to cry on when I needed it. Thank you for your advice, for pushing me when I needed it, for your compassion, and for hearing me. But most importantly, thank you for just being you. I told you I was emotional.
My name's Isabel Scott, and I'm honoring my elementary school secretary, Ms. Diane Serma. You were such a big impact to me in my elementary years, and I'm forever thankful for you. When I needed someone, you were there for me a lot of the times. You helped me through a lot that you may or may not know about, but I'm so grateful that you were there. The advice and wise words you contributed to my life will forever have a place in my heart. You were my best friend then and someone I could always look forward to seeing. You made my days so much better, and I will forever be grateful for you and your support within my life. Thank you.
I cried writing it, so I'm not surprised I cried reading it. I'm good, I'm good. There's boxes right here. I was just waiting for it to go away, but it didn't go away. I know.
My name is Julina, and I'm honoring Mr. Blackmore today. There is no try, there is I will or I won't. This bit of wisdom passed on to me from Mr. Blackmore has been ingrained in my mind and helped me shape my way of thinking. Over the weeks, throughout the weeks, I had Mr. Blackmore as my teacher. I always looked forward to attending his class. Mr. Blackmore is an amazing representation of a teacher who truly cares for his students and wants to see us succeed. His positive, active investment in his students has made an undeniable impact. He commits time to help us with college preparation and talks to us when we needed to talk. Mr. Blackmore encourages us to excel and prepare for the coming chapters of our lives. He has inspired me to keep working hard towards my goals. I'm thankful for his influence in my life. Whether it was helping me out with my college essay or even encouraging me to step out of my comfort zone and take part in the school board meeting, Mr. Blackmore believed I could do great things and pushed me to give my best. I want to thank him for all that he has done and let him know that he is making a lasting impact on the lives he touches. Thank you, Mr. Blackmore, for everything.
My name's Grace Hull, and I'm crying before I even give my speech. The person I want to honor today is Ms. Mead. I chose to honor her because when I first got here, I was new and... One second. I didn't know anybody. She's always been an amazing teacher and a person, and really helped me get out of my shell. In fact, if she wasn't motivating me to be the best performer I could be, I most likely would not be here right now, reading this letter to you all today. She's one of the most inspiring people I know, and she's never told me, "You can't do this even if everyone else has." She always makes me happy to come to class, even when I'm having bad days, and I hope that she stays her same bright and energetic self and becomes the teacher that makes it worth coming to school for many students for the years to come, just as she has for me.
So I said real quick, I said that if she didn't cry, then she would fail. When I needed someone, you were there for me a lot of the times. You helped me through a lot that you may or may not know about, but I'm so grateful for that you were there. The advice and wise words you contributed to my life will forever have a place in my heart. You were my best friend then and someone I could always look forward to seeing. You made my days so much better, and I will forever be grateful for you and your support within my life. Thank you.
I cried writing it, so I'm not surprised I cried reading it. I'm good, I'm good. There's boxes right here. I was just waiting for it to go away, but it's gonna go away.
My name's Julina, and I'm honoring Mr. Blackmore today. There is no try. There is I will or I won't. This bit of wisdom passed on to me from Mr. Blackmore has been ingrained in my mind and helped me shape my way of thinking. Over the weeks, uh, throughout the weeks, I had Mr. Blackmore as my teacher. I always looked forward to attending his class. Mr. Blackmore is an amazing representation of a teacher who truly cares for his students and wants to see us succeed. His positive, active investment in his students has made an undeniable impact. He commits time to help us with college preparation and talks to us when we needed to talk. Mr. Blackmore encourages us to excel and prepare for the coming chapters of our lives. He has inspired me to keep working hard towards my goals. I'm thankful for his influence in my life. Whether it was helping me out with my college essay, or even encouraging me to step out of my comfort zone and take part in the school board meeting, Mr. Blackmore believed I could do great things and pushed me to give my best. I want to thank him for all that he has done and let him know that he is making a lasting impact on the lives he touches. Thank you, Mr. Blackmore, for everything.
My name's Grace Hull, and I'm crying before I even give my speech. The person I want to honor today is Ms. Mead. I chose to honor her because when I first got here, I was new and... One second. I didn't know anybody. She's always been amazing, uh, an amazing teacher and a person... and a person and really helped me get out of my shell. In fact, if she wasn't motivating me to be the best performer I could be, I most likely would not be here right now, reading this letter to you all today. She's one of the most inspiring people I know, and she's never told me, "You can't do this even if everyone else has." She always makes me happy to come to class, even when I'm having bad days, and I hope that she stays her same bright and energetic self and becomes the teacher that makes it worth coming to school for many students for the years to come, just as she has for me.
So I said real quick, I said that if she didn't cry, then she would fail. I was always told that I should be a writer. I was told that if I liked to write so much, I should turn that passion into a career. I was told that I had a natural talent for it and that I should utilize it. I do appreciate all that I was told, but the supposed talent for writing is now failing me at the most important of times, when I am finally able to put a name to the reason I have it in the first place. Though, that being said, I don't believe even the most advanced and sophisticated of writers could ever convey the admiration I have for you. Mrs. Garner, you are my English teacher for the entirety of my middle school experience. That was three years of you not only helping me improve my literary skills, but also helping me grow and mature as a person. You guided me through academic and personal hardships, supporting and encouraging me to constantly work to make a change. You were the first to congratulate me whenever I succeeded and the first to assist me whenever I failed. You knew what I was capable of and always pushed me to be the best version of myself. You made me feel cared for, and in turn, you made me care. Your validation would make my week because I valued your op- I valued your opinion so much. You truly became a second mother to me. Going to your class was the highlight of every day. You made me enjoy reading, you made me appreciate new forms of writing. You allowed me to break free from my shell in a place where I felt comfortable doing so, not to mention you were kind, understanding, and assuring. The environment you created was one of pure goodness, which I know is a vague word to use, but there is no other way to encapsulate how amazing being your student was. To put it simply, I would not be half the person I am today without you. Your English teachings helped propel, helped propel me through schooling, and now your personal teachings will help propel me through the rest of my life. I am forever grateful to you. Thank you.
I have had the privilege of having Mr. Stevens as my swim coach for the past two years. He is also now my teacher for astronomy. I'm here tonight to honor him for several reasons. I want to publicly thank you for working with me over the past two years in the pool. You saw potential in me and pushed me beyond what I even thought I could do. You encouraged me and made me believe I could reach goals that I may have not have set for myself. You helped me make a dream, make my dreams a reality, and I'm proud of... and I'm proud of how this senior year has ended. You were considered a young teacher, and I didn't want you to have to wait ten to fifteen years for students to come back and let you know how much you made an impact on their lives. Teachers deal with a lot. You were not burned out or jaded yet, so I wanted to leave you with a challenge. I want you to remember that when you come to school and teach each school year, there are students like me that need teachers like you, teachers that see potential in students when they can't see it in themselves. Teachers that are easy to talk to and listen, teachers that encourage and push students to reach their goals that could otherwise... Oh, God. That could otherwise, uh, otherwise be remained as wishes or dreams. I challenge you to find future Austins and keep making a difference. Your job as a teacher is important, and I want you to know on the rough days, it is still worth walking through those doors. I had the opportunity tonight to tell you thank you, but I know there is a long line of other students that feel the exactly same way. Thank you again, Mr. Stevens.
Tonight, I am honoring Mr. Woodside. I've known Mr. Woodside since my freshman year. I've watched him grow from a student teacher to now my very own AP Human Geography teacher. He was the first person that came to mind when I thought about what makes a great teacher. He truly cares about what he's doing, he's always there for his students, and he genuinely wants to make a difference in all his students' lives. He's provided a safe space for his students to freely ask him any questions and make sure he is there when we need him. I'm usually a very quiet student, but I've never felt uncomfortable asking him for guidance when I truly needed it. He probably doesn't know this, but I truly look up to him a lot in many ways. He's currently at Eastern Michigan University, and I find it inspiring that he's a student just like us. He really does take the time to get to know us. He's also taught me a lot outside of just AP Human Geography. I'm very grateful to have him as my teacher, and I want him to know that I appreciate all he does, even when I might not say it out loud. I wish you the best in your career. We need more people like you, truly. Thank you so much.
I'm Caitlin. Um, I'm choosing to honor Mr. Cheshire tonight for many reasons. I think one thing that separates Cheshire from other teachers is his willingness to learn about and interact with each of his students. I have been in a few classes where I barely interact with the teacher, but from day one of meeting Cheshire, he has always made it a point to get to know me as well as other students. He learns all of his students' names and greets them at the classroom door as they walk in. A lot of times before he starts being in class, he asks everyone what is going on in their lives, and we have a little life update before class. He listens to us and cares about what we have to say. When making decisions that affect the class, he always asks for student input because he cares about our opinions. He does a lot for us, even goofy things like, that he probably would prefer to not have documented, like doing TikTok dances and saying weird catchphrases. He was always willing to joke with us and help entertain us. We all know and love Cheshire's corny jokes. Mr. Cheshire is always the first to hype up his students. He is never negative. I love sharing achievements with him because he, because even though he is not the type to show overly excitedness, you can tell he is happy and proud. He usually gives a great high five and shares it with the class, and I appreciate it so much. He has continued my love for music and has not discouraged me once. He always pushes me to be better and helps me in any way I need, truly a teacher that makes a difference. As most of you know, Mr. Cheshire got Teacher of the Year, and I hope that he knows how happy all of his students are for him. He has done a lot for us and deserves the recognition. It is always the little things he does that he probably does not notice has the biggest impact. It takes one teacher or even just one interaction to completely change someone's perspective on life and be of positive influence. Mr. Cheshire has successfully impacted my life and many other students, so thank you.
Mr. Roller has been the best coach I've ever had. I joined bowling this year, and I've never excelled faster than I ever have before. I went from brand-new to bowling to one of the best on the team. From rocky tournaments and a hard start, we grew a bond. Nobody has ever taught me so much so fast and helped me improve quickly. I know a lot of people share my opinion with him and love him as a coach. I personally hope everyone he teaches in his years has as good, as good of experience as I did, and I can't wait to go to all of his bowling and soccer team events in the upcoming years.
Hi, I'm Mackenzie, and I chose to honor Ms. Drun tonight. Um, back when I was a freshman, when we were starting scheduling, I, um, took debate and persuasion as one of my electives for sophomore year because I figured it would be good to have better experience within that field. Um, that class was the first time I had ever met, uh, Ms. Drun and had her as a teacher. Since then, I've been in Journalism 2, which is the yearbook class. Um, while it is extremely stressful and exhausting and taxing at times, the outcome is always worth it. Ms. Drun has been a teacher of mine for three years now, and through all the stress and upset, she's always there to bring some comfort into the class and in general. She's helped me develop better communicative skills, more depth in writing skills, and better at taking leadership positions. I appreciate everything she's done for me as a student and a person throughout high school.
My name's Anthony, and the person I'll be honoring tonight is, uh, Mrs. Koyis. I want to first thank her for setting all of this up so I could even have the chance to, uh, honor her in front of everybody, and so I could get to know how the school system works in depth and how like things actually get done. Next, I want to thank Ms. Koyis for not only teaching me, um, dang.
You got, he's got me crying.
Next, Mrs. Koyis, I want to thank you for everything you have done outside of teaching to help me and my classmates. Oh, my God. I want to thank you for everything you have done outside of teaching me and my classmates to succeed in life, but not... to succeed in school, but not only that, but in life. Thank you for pushing me to be a better student as well as an overall person. Mrs. Koyis felt like my home even while I was at school. She was always there if you had a question about school, about life, something socially, she was just always there, even juggling health problems and the family at home and millions of extracurriculars she's a part of. I think it just needs to be brought to everybody's attention that she's a modern-day superhero.
I couldn't have asked for a better mentor throughout high school other than Mr. Madison, which is why I chose to honor him today. This is really hard. He helped me realize coming to school was more than just taking notes and reading textbooks. It's about stepping out of your comfort zone, trying new things, and always being yourself. Room B127 is a safe place radiating positivity, kindness, and compassion. The first time I had Mr. Madison, he told me my smile makes him smile. And every day, regardless of how my day is going, I smile as soon as I entered his classroom. He is the most kind and uplifting person I've ever met, and the potential he saw in me is what helped me see it for myself. There isn't enough paper in the world to write how wonderful he is and how thankful I am for him and all he's done for me. As I go through my life, I'll probably forget a lot of things and people from school, but one person I can ensure I won't forget about is Mr. Madison. The courage and bravery he helped me embrace will forever be a part of me.
Do or do not, there is no try. It's a quote from Master Yoda. Insta... Man, y'all got me crying. It's a quote from Master Yoda. It's Star Wars trilogy, the original, and little old fifth-grade me didn't know, but at the time, I was given the best piece of advice that I've ever had in my life. I am choosing to honor my fifth-grade teacher, Mr. Clum, because he was the best teacher I've ever had. When I was in his classroom, I remember him vividly advocating for what we wanted to do and for us to try new things. He was a tool, he was given to the fullest extent, and we did so many funny, fun classroom things together. I remember one day, we had a debate on whether either Minecraft or Terraria was a better video game, so I asked Mr. Clum how we should go about solving this debate, and he suggested a PowerPoint. So I joined together with Anthony Weckworth, and we made a PowerPoint together about why Terraria was better. And I remember presenting it to Mr. Clum and just feeling so proud of our accomplishment. And I still have access to the PowerPoint even today. And I sometimes go back and look at it, just and just remember the good times. I also remember our school command, we had Chromebooks, and I remember we used them almost every day and helped us do work. And one time, when we went to vacation to Arizona during school, I was able to convince my mother to get a laptop so we can do work over Google Classroom, which I was able to do. But it also introduced me to video games like Team Fortress 2. But as unusual as it sounds, video games were and so are a huge part of my life. I'm going to university next year, and video games are paying for like a quarter. And if, if it weren't for video games, I'm not really sure I could go to the university I want to. I might have, I might have to go with, uh, the one that's cheapest. And finally, the classroom activities were just simply amazing. I remember we would always do more hands-on activities, and one time, we were going over the American Revolution, uh, the, and we had like a mock battle of Lexington and Concord. If memory serves me right, we were designated our teams as American Revolutionaries and the British Redcoats, and we would all line up in a straight line with foam balls as our musket shot. And then Mr. Clum would be like the commanding officer, and he would yell "Fire!", and then everyone would just throw their foam ball trying to eliminate... And then we just, it was basically dodgeball, but American Revolution. And if it weren't for these very fond memories, and Mr. Clum... Sorry, all of these were very fond memories of mine, and Mr. Clum has definitely shaped the person that I am now today. And if it weren't for him, I would probably be trying to figure out a lot of stuff right now and who I am. So, please, take this award and just remember that you'd always be... Sorry, the Master Yoda to my Luke Skywalker.
My name is Sydney, and tonight I am honoring my basketball coach, Connie. I am honoring her tonight because for the last four years, she's made a huge... She's made a huge impact on my life without even realizing it. She's my coach, my mentor, my confidant, and my friend. She has seen me laugh, and she has seen me cry, and through it all, she has pushed me to become the best version of myself. When I would score off a good post move, I would look at her and always see a double thumbs up. When I messed, when I messed up, I would look at her, tell me it's alright and stay composed. And whenever I had a question, she would already have the answer. She took the time to get to know me and how best to teach me. I will always cherish her practices, we would goof around, when I would pretend to beat her up, and the way she would yell me to put her down when I picked her up was a joke. And although my last basketball season is over, she will always be my coach. I will still go to her for advice and mess with her whenever I can. I love you, Coach, and thank you for everything.
Is this on? Oh, Lord, it's my turn. So, disclaimer, I am crying. No question about it, because there's, I don't have paper here because there was no paper I could have written enough on. She's just done so much for me. I, Ms. Kayler, I'm honoring you today because you've done more than I could say. It just... I could not put into words how much it means to me for her to help me actually get this far. I would not be a senior here today, and I would not be standing in front of any of you without her help because I, I wasn't, I wasn't good. I, I needed her guidance, and I'm just so happy I had it, just going through the high school year. Without it, I don't think I would make it this far. I think I would have been gone by the second year. But thank you so much, Ms. Kayler. I really cannot thank you enough. Take the dang award.
Okay. When I walk into school every day and make my way to the band room for two hours for Jazz and Symphonic Band, I think about how much I love band and how it's made up some of the best years of my life. It is something I love, and I owe that to Mr. Bell. When I think back to fifth grade, I remember Mr. Bell coming into my classroom and taking us down to the band room and showing us all the instruments we could play so we could decide which one we wanted to. I remember Mr. Bell grabbed the trumpet and played the most simple Star Wars theme and immediately won me over, and it was not a decision in my mind, and I decided to play trumpet. As the years went on through middle school, I continued to enjoy band, and I always annoyed Mr. Bell with very high screechy notes. Just to clarify, that legacy's still going, okay? The years went on, and I started to grow a passion and a love for music and the people that I play it with. I go to school now every day and play with the same people who I've grown to call my best friends and who I care for and love like a family. If you guys get me into this domino effect of crying, I'm gonna... When talking about Mr. Bell, a man who's almost four years into retirement, what else is there to be said other than the fact that he's a super fun, caring, and genuine man and a phenomenal teacher? I can't thank him enough for everything he has done for me because not only has he introduced me to music and made me grow a passion for it, but music has also introduced me to lifelong friends who I could not imagine my life without. Thank you, Mr. Bell, for all you've done.
Uh, my name's Genesis, and today I'm honoring Coach Paul. Um, being a student athlete can be hard, but having the right people by your side makes it easier. Sophomore year, I started softball for the first time, and let's just say I was not good at it. Um, being brand-new to the program, everyone was nice, but they weren't pushing me to better my skills. However, Coach Paul was different. Whether it was fielding drills or batting drills, he always had something helpful to say that would help me be better. But he also knew that I'm not the kind of athlete that needs constructive criticism, or I'm the kind of athlete that needs constructive criticism in a stern voice to try and be better. No matter the half-broken thumb he had or the concussions I had, he always pushed me to be better. To push, push me to be as better... Whoa, whoa, whoa. Whoa, 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 guys, I messed up. The concussions I had, he always pushed me as hard as he could to be better and do better. His words may have seemed harsh to others, but for me, it was exactly what was needed to make things happen. Coach Paul was the easiest person to talk to, always laughing and joking with no filter. I am thankful that he's seen that I had potential. Thank you, Coach Paul, for always being there and being my biggest supporter in the dugout. Although I still don't hit very well, you made me love a sport I never thought about playing until sophomore year. This season will be very different without your personality or your random drill binder. This season will be very different without your personality or your random drill binder, but I know you have the best interest to see us succeed in life. Like Coach Paul always said, you got this kid.
Hold on, real quick. Before we start, I'd like to apologize for the domino effect of tears that I caused here today. It was not my intention.
I think Isis might have started it. And it came to Isis from the past 15 years. I want to thank, can we please have another round of applause for our honored people? At this team, I'm gonna, at this time, I'm gonna ask the honored folks to please return to your seats. And once they have done that, if I can have the counterparts go on up and stand behind your board member.
Well, good evening, everybody. To get started, let me talk a little bit about what today was about. So, this morning, Mr. Janay swimming right now, so. The day started out with some introductions. All the kids came in this morning. We had a little breakfast, and hardly any of them ate breakfast. And so, we had breakfast, we introduced each other, and then they spent some time on a tour of the building and all the different departments that are here. And then they spent some time with us, the counterparts. We spent at least an hour together, and then we went and had lunch, thanks to Mr. Joe D. Felice in the Joe's Italian Grill. And then they came back and they practiced their script. And I'm gonna tell you, they aced it on the first time. Like, it was incredible. It was the best first run I've seen. So, congratulations, you guys did a great job. So, what we're gonna do here really quick is we're gonna go through each individual, and we'll say a few words about our experience with your child, and then they're gonna introduce who came with them, right? So, wanna start with, let's start with Joe down there. Oh, I should have just started with Teresa. That would have been so much.
Hello. Hi. My counterpart today was Brooklyn. Very cool. It was a lot of fun, good conversation. She's very bright, and she's gonna have a wonderful future. She took some good photos for me, too, so I'm gonna put her to work, you know? So, yeah, you wanna tell you who you brought with you today?
I brought with me today my mom and my stepdad, so thank you for coming.
Hello, my name is Mike. I'm the Technology Director for Roseville Schools. My counterpart was Zach, and Zach did a great job. He's got a great future ahead of him, and we know that he likes Star Wars, and he likes Yoda and to play games, video games. And did you bring anybody with you, Zach?
Yeah, today I have with me, I have my grandma, my grandpa, my stepdad, my mom, and I believe I saw my uncle back there. Yeah, I see him. Yep, he's back there.
Hello, Nicole Provo, Coordinator of State and Federal Programs. I had Sydney with me today, and I was really excited because she didn't fall asleep when I was telling her what my job ended here. But we also had a lot of fun and a lot of laughs, and I think, obviously, she has a bright future, and I already have my dog penciled in when she becomes a veterinarian someday.
Tonight, I brought my mom, my dad, my grandma, my grandpa, and my other grandma.
My name is Andrea Deister. I'm the Coordinator of Food Service, and I had Logan today. Logan loves to talk. And he's very, had a lot of ideals, a lot of suggestions. He even gave me ideals and suggestions for a department that I had nothing to do with. So, I just want him to know that you define your future, and wherever you go, you define that no one else, no circumstances in life does. And you continue on until you get that PhD in psychology.
I'm Logan, and I'm here with my dad.
Hi, I'm Scott Sikorski. I'm the Supervisor of Transportation and Maintenance, and I had Nathan today. Really bright future from this guy. Funny thing is, is that his mom actually is one of my employees, so he got to boss her around all day today, so it was fantastic. Nate, you wanna announce who's here for you?
Yes, my bus driver mother is here, and she also drove us to lunch today. Needless to say, I did not thank her when I got off the bus. And I also brought my annoy-loving sisters with me. They're all right there. And thank you, guys, for coming. I love you, guys.
Good evening. I'm Teresa Tamala. I'm the Director of Special Education. I had the pleasure of spending some time with Genesis today. She plans on continuing her education at U of D Mercy, and I have to say, I think she is the most, I've been doing this for six years, most confident young person that I've had the pleasure of spending time with, and I know she has some great things ahead of her. So, thank you for spending time with me today. She had some experience in the past volunteering with children, and I know she's gonna do great things in her life.
My name's Genesis, and today I brought with me my grandma, my mom, my dad, and my
Hi, I'm Joe Smith. I'm the Director of Buildings and Grounds. This is my counterpart today. We had a great day. She has great goals for her future. She wants to be a nurse. We had a lot to talk about. My wife's in nursing school, so we would just chat it up all afternoon, so it was a great time.
My mom.
I'm Gary Collins, and I'm the School Board Attorney. I'm used to talking to young people who wanna be lawyers. So, when I talked to my counterpart, and she wanted to go into medicine and work with babies and deliveries, I was stunned. I really didn't know what to say. I just said, "You are so brave." I just kept saying, "You are so brave." We didn't get beyond the fact that I kept saying, "You are so brave." I'm sorry. Can you talk about who you brought today?
I'm Takai, and I brought my mom and my sister.
Hi, I'm Mariana Ashbaugh, and I'm the Executive Director of Business and Finance. And today, I was partnered with Neveah, and I can honestly tell you, she's gotta be one of the hardest-working high school seniors I've ever talked to. Unbeknownst to us, the weekend prior to us meeting at a board meeting, she was my waitress at Red Robin. And then I found out, yes, and then I found out she actually works two jobs and also plays sports, takes many AP classes, is gonna have a bright future, gonna join the Marines. I tell you, she's got it all, and she's gonna have a great career ahead of her. Good job, Neveah.
I'm here with my mom, in the back. She's hiding.
Hi, I'm Pete Hedmark, Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources and Title IX Coordinator. Isabel Scott was my counterpart today. The best compliment, I think, that could be given to her was, after she chatted with me about what I do, I had her work with the three clerical, the three ladies in the office, and talk about each one of what they do, and they said of all these years of kids doing that, she was the best, most talkative, best questions, and most attentive that they've ever met. So, she's gonna have it all together. She's gonna go into psychology and possibly criminology to be detective.
I brought my two sisters with me.
Hello, my name is Michelle Williams Ward, and I had two trustees here today, Jolena and Grace. We talked, we did kind of a group thing and talked about what the school board did. They had a lot of questions, very good questions, by the way, and here they are.
I brought my mother today, so.
Hello, I came by myself today.
Yeah, yes. Kevin Swetnowski, Vice President of the School Board. I unfortunately had to work today, so was not able to spend a whole lot of time with the counterparts here, but, you know, talking with my other associates here had, you know, it sounds like it was a great day, so thank you for that. Just a couple of quick comments. I mean, it's great, you know, that, you know, that we included this year some different building staff and coaches, so that was, that was nice. That was a nice change here. You know, Austin, our number-one salesperson for the scholarship tickets in a couple of years in a row, so Austin, keep that up. You other teachers, you gotta learn from Austin there. We mentioned, you know, counterparts or student teachers. You know, here's a prime example. We have Austin and Ted that started out as student teachers and have worked their way up, and look at, they're already up here being honored by their counterparts. So, thank you, and thank you, parents, for all you do. I'm sorry. Paige, who'd you bring?
Real quick, I'd like to say, no, Ms. Teresa Tamala and I are not related. I have to say that every time. She was my principal, though, so that was pretty cool. Anyway, today I brought my mom. She's in the front. She always is. Love her.
I'm Teresa Janay, I'm President of the Board. Before I talk about Austin, who wants to take my seat real fast, and he's gotta, my board members wanna get rid of me already because of Austin, but he did a good job. All you teachers, I hope you all and staff that we recognize, and I hope you all sleep very well knowing what, how you changed these children's lives today, because I'm tired of crying anymore today, I'll tell you that. Austin handled this pretty well. I didn't, he was just amazing. Just, I don't know what else to say, but amazing, and I wish you the best of luck, honey, whatever you do, okay?
Tonight, I brought my parents and my brother.
Before I get started, during the tour, the kids are all walking around, and then they decide, you know, I see a head peek in my office. And I said, "Well, come on in." So, all of them, they were all there, they all came into my office. Some of them, you know, said, "Oh, can I sit in the chair?" I said, "Sit in that one, 'cause it's more comfortable," you know? And so, they're all sitting there, and behind my desk, I have this mural of all kinds of pictures, you know, canvas pictures, of kids from Roseville, to remind me why I do what I do. And so, just like last year, believe it or not, one of the pictures had Paige in it. So, I'm giving her my picture off the wall. Back to square one, I gotta find another picture. Joe, can you get on that? So, I want you to open it.
Paige, may your leadership skills serve you well. Good luck on your next adventure. Mr. Glasskowsky, Assistant Superintendent. Thank you so much.
And back to the script. So, today, I spent some time with Ramaya, and I heard that she's interested in going to Eastern. And so, we talked a little bit about the path to get there and how you're gonna do that. She wants to be a nurse, and boy, do we need nurses, right? So, somebody else was gonna be, who's gonna be a traveling nurse, right? So, we talked a little bit about that, and I think Mr. McCartney might have some insight, because.
I have two nurses that told me yes.
So, it's a profession that we need, and we talked about how they do most of the work, you know? The doctors, you know, they just say, "Oh, that's what it is," and then you get all the jobs to do. But we need you. We're not getting any younger, so I wish you the best of luck, and if you ever need any advice about Eastern, I got two degrees from there. Austin's gonna have a PhD eventually when he's done, so we can give you some insight. It's a good place to be. So, I wanna thank Ramaya for asking really good questions. Of course, we talked about snow days, right? We're all out. We're done. We're done. We maxed out. I struck out on the last one, but so did everybody else, so I don't feel so bad. So, thank you, Ramaya, and please introduce who you came with.
I'm Ramaya, and I came with my parents.
Hello, I'm Joe D. Felice. I'm the Secretary of the Board of Education. This is always a fun day for us. We don't always get to see the good and everything, but this is a very good day, this and graduation. She asked a lot of questions, a lot of good questions. I wish I could have spent more time, but I was very busy, and she was busy also. But she asked a lot of good questions, and I just wanna thank all the parents, because I'm a parent, and I hope to have my son up here someday. But anyways, it was a very nice day, and parents, you did a good job.
I just brought both my moms.
Hi, I'm Matt McCartney. I'm the Board Treasurer, and I didn't get to spend a lot of time with Hunter today, but in the few minutes that we had to talk, I think, Hunter, you talk more than I do, maybe. I can tell you that you're extremely articulate, and it sounds like you already know exactly what you're gonna do with your future, and that's good to know, good to know in advance, for sure. You'll be, you'll be good for our society one day, for sure. And, oh, one other thing. I, I, sorry, I told you I was gonna talk more than you. While you were reading your script, I noticed that if you, if you don't decide to go into the family business, you've got a really good voice. I think you might be great in either radio or television.
Well, thank you. I'm Hunter, as you said, and I'm here alone, actually.
My name's Gina Uro, and I'm one of the trustees on the board. I was with Mackenzie today, who blew me away with her email of, "I'll have very great questions, even if Paige says that the teachers gave them to her," and called her out, because I was really impressed, so if we didn't have that, we'd all live. So, thank you very much. It's always a super fun day.
I'm here with my parents today.
Hi, I'm Dave Rice. I'm the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction. I was with Anthony today, and we, we had a good time. We got to spend about an hour talking back and forth about, you know, what, what we in my office do around here and what he is up to. I think he's got a really bright future, and I think we should all give him a round of applause and congratulations, because just this morning, he was accepted to Michigan He doesn't know, he doesn't know if that's where he's going, but he was accepted, so congratulations. Who'd you come with, Anthony?
I came with my dad, but I know my little brother and my mom are watching at home.
We're gonna let this president take his next step. You ready to sign? Yeah? Yes, sir.
I hear we have a birthday coming up this week.
Mr. Glasskowsky.
We're gonna sing "Happy Birthday" to Mr. Glasskowsky. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear my.
Thank you very much. It's Wednesday, that's my birthday. I'm in March. So, thank you very much. I need a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Mr. President, Mr. President, I would love, I would love to make the motion to adjourn the meeting.
I need a second motion to adjourn.
I second to adjourn this meeting.
All those in favor?
Aye!
Any opposed?
Yes.
Motion carries. Good night, everyone.